All right. Well, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Next time, EB, you'll get to do that. All right. So, Council, we do have a time certain item at seven o'clock, which is going to be the presentation for the audits from Haney and Company. If we get through our items before seven and we have enough time, we may advance one of the later items ahead of that, but we'll judge that when we get to the close to the point. But we'll take a break for the seven o'clock time certain item. So with that, let's go ahead and move on to agenda number two, which is public comments. If there's members of the public that wish to speak at this time, please step up to the podium and state your name and make any comments that you wish to have. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda number three, which is staff reports, and we'll begin with the administration report.
Item of note. So, the mayor and I have been working on, there's a Travis County, goodness, let me, it's a basically Travis County is in, is in, been classified by the federal government as an urban county, and so they qualify for certain grant funds, community development. It's for housing and other types of community developments. And so Travis County reached out to Sunset Valley and asked the city if we would be willing to participate as a small city to potentially be eligible for grant funds. It is a part of, you know, the main, a big part of it is housing, which, you know, we don't really have, there's probably not a grant we could utilize for housing since we're only single family. However, in the letter, it did say that they've spent money on water and street projects, infrastructure projects, and parks. So potentially, there's grant funds that may be eligible. This is the first time the city, to my knowledge, would have participated in anything like that with the county. The deadline, the turnarounds are really quick for that, so we had to put our statement of intent. We did that yesterday. The mayor will be signing a letter this evening as a formal letter of intent that we'd like to participate. However, they said, the county said that the cooperative agreement that has to be approved by all of the city councils, that has to be approved no later than June 24th, which means we may, you know, we're about to enter our summer break, so we may have to call a special meeting. So, would you all be available potentially, because they're supposed to get us the co-op agreement by Friday? Would you all be available next week, next Tuesday, for a very short, very short meeting? Very, very short. So. Yeah. We, and I can, I can work on, I can work on scheduling that with all of you. But we, I'm just saying, in the next two weeks, we may need to schedule a called meeting, but that would be the only, that would be the only item on the agenda is to approve that co-op agreement. So, six o'clock, yes, potentially. Yes. So, just stay tuned. I'll be emailing you all on that. Excuse me. Any other items I wanted to touch on? No other items. Any questions? And Danielle's about to present on Engagement HQ. So, any, any questions on anything in the admin report?
Councilmember Rosengard.
Where is Leona Restaurant going in? And do the two last items and the budget adjustments need to be signed by the mayor and you? They are unsigned at this time.
Kyle is the, oh, sorry. What was the first question about a restaurant?
First one is Leona, the restaurant?
Oh, Leona is the name of 6405 Brody. So, the Botanical Garden.
The Botanical Garden. Oh, I didn't realize. Okay.
Very into the city. Leona is the, their, is the official name. Correct.
And then, two items on the budget adjustment are not signed, but all the ones prior to that were just required the city administrator are signed.
Did you send those to the mayor to be signed? Okay. Kyle will get those signed by the mayor. Yes.
Other question for the administration report?
All right. So now, we're going to have an Engagement HQ presentation. Let me pull up slideshow. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This evening, I will quickly introduce you to the city's new engagement platform, Engagement HQ. This platform was discussed at the council retreat last year, and over the past few months, the admin team has been working to establish the platform and populate it with information and engagement tools that will be beneficial to the residents as well as to the greater community. Concurrent to the development of EHQ, I've worked to increase awareness of our city and all that we have to offer to the community. I'd like to share with you a 40-minute clip that's currently on our social platforms and hopefully soon in the lobbies of many of our local businesses.
Welcome to Sunset Valley, where every moment feels just right. Explore the beauty of our trails, ideal for hiking and biking with your family and pets. Also, not too bad of a view. Find treasures in our many unique shops and familiar favorites. Don't forget to support the local entrepreneurs. Indulge in delicious meals at our diverse restaurants, catering to every taste. I'll take that, I'll take that, I'll take that. Okay, thank you. Experience the warmth and hospitality of our community. Sunset Valley. It's good to be here.
So, in addition to this, this is the outreach to the community, sort of enhance engagement with them and understanding of what we have to offer. Sunday, we also made the new EHQ site live and invited residents to log on, visit engagement.sunsetvalley.org, and become part of the conversation. You should have received an email early Sunday morning. You can't hear me? Is that better? That is better. Okay. So, I guess I'll go back on that. This past Sunday, we made the new Engagement HQ site live, and we sent out an email to all residents asking them to visit engagement.sunsetvalley.org to register and join the conversation. It's a pretty easy sign-up. Once a guest enters the site, there's an opportunity to register for the site. Once registered, the guests can explore current projects and then subscribe to receive notification for those projects. Please note that you must subscribe for each project that you're interested in engaging with on this platform. Once you've subscribed to a project, for example, the city council page, which you see right here, you'll have the opportunity to participate in the current discussions, the polls, and feedback opportunities. Departments such as Public Works have the ability to provide lifecycle information for larger projects that will be completed over time, while the police department will have the ability to post the monthly blotter and also notices like most wanted. Thank you to the mayor and council for giving the city the opportunity to enhance engagement opportunities with the community. I'm happy to take the first question or listen to any ideas that may have come to mind while listening to this presentation.
Thank you, Taylor. So, this is, Council, if you remember, this was a replacement for our old gov site, you know, that previously had some organization by project capabilities, but it wasn't really as rich or robust as this, where we can create essentially customized sites within our site to present information in a, hopefully a better format, right? And people can subscribe directly to those pages to get updates. They can also post comments. For example, the city council page is where we're intending to provide a public forum for people to make comments on agenda items or on general topics. And so, that's especially important for council members to be aware of that, you know, understanding like when the public is interacting, they may be using this as a platform for us. When you register, I believe you can, you have, we'll have the details of the people who register, but it's not like a public details that's made available, and you just need to put your, your name that you want to use. And I think we're encouraging residents to use their names, right? You know, that we can do that, but I don't know, Matt, if you want to talk about it.
They don't have to use their names. It's, you know, they have the option to be, you know, just use as a screen name, I believe. A council member left this comment earlier today. So, but on the backend, for like, you know, if someone does leave an official public comment, we have that ability to retain for the minutes the actual name because it's in the background.
So, as the site gets built out, you know, we'll see more capabilities. But already, you know, we have the Upper Cougar Creek, or I'm sorry, the Savannah Trail projects on there. We have the Reimagined Brody project on there. So, as if council especially wants to identify certain projects to be elevated for specific sites, that's another feedback point I think staff would be welcoming as well. So, with that, Council, open it up for feedback or questions for Danielle or the rest of the staff. Councilmember Rosengard?
So, she said that you have to register or subscribe to each project. And can those projects, so you don't have to upload more information, can Public Works, Carolyn did an excellent job with the CIP projects, can that just be pulled into this? Or does she have to do more work in order to present this to the residents?
We'll be putting all of it into Engagement HQ. Any, any of the larger projects, basically, will have an Engagement HQ page. So, anything that's there, we may move it over, but for the projects going forward, we'll keep those on here, Engagement HQ.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, yeah, I registered and just wanted to see what it looked like from residents and also from, like, council members. So, just like the old one, we can just go here and read it. It's not really broken down by council meeting or anything, so it seems like it's just going to be like a rolling project and.
Correct. I mean, the nice thing about that is it's the same link for every, anytime you want to make a council comment, you know, you go to the same, same link every time. That's the link right there. However, so, the resident will, the, the member of the public will have to, you know, say, agenda item. Maybe I'll, maybe we can have additional instructions to say, please list the date, the date and, agenda, date and agenda item number of the comment you listed. But it can also be used for just like you did, just a general.
Okay. Maybe just for the, like, the calendar items. I don't know how most people are kind of like getting into the agenda and stuff like that, but wherever we.
We're, we're putting the, we're putting the link here, so.
Okay.
Like, obviously, you know, the link for this meeting hasn't posted, but.
I think, well, I, I go to the calendar now because it's like, it's posted, everything's posted there. It's like really helpful. So, maybe just, maybe we need to go the opposite direction, like a link to Engagement HQ on the calendar. It's like, here's the agenda.
Oh, I see what you mean. On the, yes, I see what, on the website calendar.
Yeah. And like, just directly into like the council project or whatever. Cool. It looks great. It was super easy to sign up. And, good job.
Other questions? Any other feedback? And congratulations to staff for lunch, and I'm sure we'll continue to see improvements over time as we get feedback from residents and the members of the public. But I think it'll be, it's nice to have a replacement, you know, especially one that we can, we can hopefully highlight a lot more of the, the work that the city's doing for residents to actually see and get subscriptions to. So, oh, Councilor Dalton?
Just one more question. I liked that, I liked the little ad that you put together. Where did, where did the, who put that together?
We worked with a team to put it together. They're called Roundtree. So, we worked with them to put that, that clip together to sort of promote the city a little bit more.
Okay. Where does that work into our budget?
We have a communication, a community engagement line for advertising and promotion.
Hot fun.
Hot fun.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think it's a good idea. It's like a little bit more dynamic than.
Fifteen hundred bucks, which I thought was.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I couldn't believe it. That's pretty good. So, yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. We'll move on now to the Public Works report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to address a few things. I think many of you received an email regarding the Austin Water, kind of water shutdown that's going to be happening on Friday. The vast majority of Sunset Valley is outside of that area. That will really only affect possibly, if it has any effect, will be places down on Country White Lane or in that area. Sunset Valley is actually in a different pressure zone. It's not in the southwest pressure zone. So, we should not see anything. But we still are asking people to conserve water and, you know, help, you know, just keep water use down that day across the area. Austin Water is pumping full of the reservoirs and stuff, so that, most people should not experience any kind of real, you know, loss of water or loss of pressure. But just in case, they want to make sure we're just being conservative with water use. We should hopefully be moving forward with the city facility solar soon. We're working through some details on the police station, just making sure what we can put on the, the vehicle awning and making sure that's acceptable. Got some benches we've installed over by the chainsaw art. And I also wanted to kind of update the seed starter program. I know Burton's in the audience today, but we're kind of starting a prairie restoration project, and it's a volunteer-led project where residents can help, you know, grow some plants that we can plant out in the green spaces to make, increase our native plant diversity. So, and if there's any other questions on any other items, or if I forgot something, please feel free to ask.
Councilmember Medics?
I just wanted to thank the Public Works team for the natural benches that were installed, and they look great. And hopefully, people can enjoy the sculpture and take some selfies and have a place to sit. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, the, how many, how many benches do we put out?
So, that would be 12 so far that have gone out. There's 10 out in the nature areas out there, and then we put two over here by the sculpture.
All right. Yeah, as I'm like running around, all of a sudden, a new one pops up, and it's pretty, so, no, they're, they're pretty great. I meant to ask this last time, but I just forgot. The, the Jones Road Monument mosaic, what is, what's the plan there?
I'm actually about to send out, we've got three concept designs. We've gotten some feedback from the Arts Commission on that, and so I'll send it to all of you guys to look at that and give feedback on the three concept designs.
Okay. Is it, is it a plan to like alter the existing one, or is it a new one?
Yes. It was, it would be putting it on and refacing the existing monument. Basically, they can build the mosaic mostly offsite, and then they can install it and finalize it here onsite.
Okay. I guess I'll wait for the email. Thank you.
Thanks.
The bench question may be, think about something that I think about when I go on the trails. I've noticed that there's new, new pathways that are being placed in certain areas, especially off the berms, where, you know, behind, like, kind of where the dam goes up to, you know, Ernest Rovels, there's like some cutting, you know, road, roads that are going off now into the, into the roads. Is it intended that we're going to try to get people off of the berms because of erosion, or is it just more for access that, that those are being placed there? I'm just kind of curious.
It's, no, we eventually do want to probably get people off the berms, but I'll double check on that and see what's, what's going on with those.
Yeah, it's, it's, they, they look like they're lined up to basically where the berm starts to get people down off of the berm to the north or the, you know, that, that direction. And then, there's another area where it gets, there's like a low-water area that's by the Boy Scout or Eagle Scout cabin, where that also diverts around it. Right. And so, I was thinking that maybe there was some concerted effort to try to get people off of those trails because of the erosion.
Yeah. And one particular area, we are trying to get especially our Kubota's off that we use out in the green spaces, get them off the top of the berm. I know that we're definitely trying to do that. So, there's one area, I know we've kind of cleared an area so that we can move the Kubota's off the berm. So, yeah, but the other path will remain for pedestrians for a while, so.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Any other questions for Public Works? All right. Moving on to public safety.
Good evening. I'll, I'll start with our corridor cleanup. On Thursday, early Thursday morning, we're going to be going and kind of doing a little housekeeping in the entrances and exits to the city to pick up some of the bandit signs that have started to spring up, as well as some piles of shopping carts and things that have started to build up again around the city. We'll do that early Thursday morning, and hopefully, it'll be a while before they start to build up again. But we've noticed that they've kind of started coming back to the city, and we try to do this at least quarterly to, when they start to pile up. We will also, again, be stepping up our lease law enforcement, enforcement in the trails. We've noticed that as summer started, there's more people walking their dogs off leash in the trail, so we'll be out doing some enforcement there, more so than usual. And I guess I'll bring up last week, we got several complaints last week because of graduations, some of the traffic on Jones. It was, I mean, it was probably the worst I've seen it this year, which is odd because this year, they, they took steps to try to reduce it. We opened up Master Sergeant Horgan again. They put the larger six-day school graduations earlier in the morning. Didn't seem to make a difference, I'll be, difference, I'll be honest. It looks like there's not enough lag time between graduations, so once it gets crowded, it just never thins out. And I don't know that they, I think they plan to put a stagger between them, but parents try to come early and catch the early graduation or come early for graduation, and it just, once it piles up there, it just doesn't clear out. And we'll, we'll meet with them and try to figure out what we can do, but we're kind of limited because if we increase the stagger too much, it'll push the ceremonies into the late evening, and then you'll have to deal with the disturbance from the speakers and all that into the evening for a week and a half. So, we're working on it. If anybody has any suggestions or noticed anything they had a question about, please chime in. We'll be meeting with them next week to figure out what we can do to try to reduce that. But it was pretty bad this year.
Any questions for public safety? Thank you, Chief. Moving on, we'll go to agenda number four, which is consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilmember Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent. Agenda item number five, minutes. Number six, ordinance. Number seven, auction. Number eight, site plan. Number nine, street signs.
All right. So, the motion is to approve on consent, item five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Does anybody want to pull one of those items? Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All those in favor of approving on consent, items number five, six, seven, eight, and nine, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the minutes from the May 21st, 2024 regular meeting and May 16th, 2024 joint work session. Item number six, the approval of an ordinance calling for the regular election of the mayor and two council members on November 5th, 2024. And I believe the date that the first filing for that is July 20th. So, if members of the public or residents are interested in applying for those, and then that's the first day that they'll be open. Item number seven, approval of the auction of a defective generator under section 37.04 and approval of an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. This will be budget amendment number 11 for the purpose of a replacement generator, which will be offset from the insurance claim for the current generator. Item number eight, approval of the final site plan and watershed development permit for the Sunset Valley Savannah Trail at Upper Cougar Creek. And item number nine, approval of the purchase and installation of new branded street signs throughout the city from FSG signs for $71,751, which is going to be coming out of our street funds to replace existing signs. And we've already noted some feedback for Public Works to make final corrections to some of the signs as needed. And also appreciate, Jerry, thank you for preparing the watershed development permits and letting us move forward with that. So, appreciated the work that you did. So, Council, we are, have some extra time before our time certain item at seven o'clock. And do we have mens here? Okay, great. So, what I would suggest that we do is we can jump ahead to agenda number 11, which would be revisiting the discussion about the city hall backyard project with some of the additional details that we requested from staff at our last meeting. And then, depending on the timing, you know, if we, if we get through that, we'll probably, you know, go back to the time certain item, but we'll, we'll adjust that based on how long it takes us for the, each of the agenda items. So, with that, I think we'll go ahead and move to agenda number 11, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action on the city hall backyard project and consideration of a task order amendment for men collaborative and an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. And this would be budget number 12, amendment number 12 that we've passed, to finalize construction documents. And let's go ahead and hand it over to staff who, who brought back the item with additional details for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to just start off, go to the next slide. Kind of just give a little brief overview of like the project and the timeline for how we got to this point. And so, in the 20, in January of 2023, the Parks and Open Space Plan was adopted, and in that kind of plan, City Hall was recognized as basically kind of one of like the recreational hubs of the plan. And April of '23, the planning and environmental recommended moving forward with planning for City Hall. And also during that budget process in June of 2023, the Community and Economic Development Committee also recommended it moving forward with a limestone and a labyrinth item behind City Hall as well. So, in September of '23, council had chosen the City Hall gathering area as an FY 2024 project. So, during the month of March, we did a community survey that was open for several weeks, as well as a community meeting in March. as well as a community meeting in March, presented kind of a draft schematic design at those, during that time, received the feedback, and that feedback was then incorporated into the final schematic design that was presented to City Council in, um, May, so just last month. And just to kind of refresh everyone's memory on the next slide, um, this is kind of what was from this Parks and Open Space Plan. It was pretty, um, basic with just wayfinding signage and nature play area, um, some of the, of course, the existing community garden. It was a pretty simple plan, and then it got refined on the next slide to the schematic design, which we've been discussing, um, from May until now, and kind of really refined what was going to be in each of these areas and what each of these areas would entail. So we have the, um, kind of entry gateway, a nature playground, um, a lawn area for movie nights and, um, games, uh, the fire pit and labyrinth area, that kind of those things were things that are very much a thing CED was wanting. Nature play, which is very, um, things that we've heard several times from Planning and Environmental. One of the things that came out of the concept design, kind of, um, community feedback, was asking for things for adults, like some strengthening things and some exercise things that's included at number eleven on there. And so each of these are the items that were included in that overall plan. We can actually skip the next slide. Yeah, and there was a lot of these things were things that also, um, we had, out of when we were doing the Savannah Trail, there were a lot of things that just didn't fit the area of the Savannah Trail that were shifted and discussed as becoming part of more of the City Hall area. So a lot of those are things that were also kind of included in the area that's, we're referring to a City Hall backyard. So what I did, I, one of the things I did was I reached out to Austin to kind of get some feedback on, well, how much do parks cost? Um, and so we, I went and, some of it they sent to me, and some of it's just from their website, on what parks cost. So the Scenic Book, Park, Scenic Brook Pocket Park, which is just under an acre, they had a small, like a half-court sports court, a community garden, a very small loop trail and a playground. The cost of that project was about eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, the, um, Neighborhood Park at the Armadillo, that was about, that one was just a trail, actually. And it says off-street parallel parking, that was basically just gravel parking on the side of the, um, um, road right there. Sixty-four Rainy Street, much different kind of, more of a plaza kind of experience, um, that was a nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The Earl J. Parmaloo Pocket Park, just under two acres, kind of similar, but they did have a pavilion on that one. It was eight hundred and ten thousand, um, for the construction. Walnut Creek, that Green Belt, this was just phase one that they did, the playgrounds, the fitness apit, putting in the water line to the drinking fountain and a concrete trail. That project came in at one point four million. So you can see, this is kind of the cost that you're looking at when you're developing, even from pocket parks up to more of a neighborhood kind of park. For example, the, or the neighborhood park toward the bottom there is a bit larger area, larger trail system, and that was about two point three million dollars. So, these are some of the different pieces that are included in the plan, a lot of decomposed granite trails. Um, we would have the concrete edging similar to the pathways along the streets. It does also provide an ADA path that is going from, to allow us to, to the community garden as well. So we've got a lot of seniors who use that garden area to make sure that we have, um, accessible path, at least down to those first beds there. Connecting into the existing trail system. And then we have different site furnishings that we've kind of discussed. One of the things that came out of that community feedback especially was shade, making sure there was plenty of shade. So shade structures over the picnicking areas, shade structures over some of the playground area, just making sure, because we all know it's super hot, um, here. Some of the play and movement elements, some of the sit-up and push-ups and tree climbers and all of those places. And as well as putting in some gardens that, and landscaping that basically tie the entire area together. Somehow I cut off the, uh, the furnishings and stuff. So those are the furnishings, those are the benches and the, uh, bike racks and welcome signs and all of that. That would be part of the plan. And then, so the cost for this project was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And to, for pretty much everything you see here. And then I think we also attached in there, kind of like how we would phase some of this. So basically, everything from the entry sign through, through the fire pit would kind of be, kind of the phase one, kind of the project and all the infrastructure that kind of goes underground with that. And then we would do the labyrinth a bit separate to allow for people to have a little bit more time to process and to give feedback on that actual design. And then orchard and those kind of plantings would be part of, um, some future Arbor Day activities in, in planting those areas. And so, that's basically the City Hall backyard area that we've kind of been discussing about. So the project did, you know, from a very simple concept into Parks and Open Space Plan to a more schematic design. We did present at the last council meeting an amendment kind of based on that, based on where the design is, uh, an amendment to the task order to complete the work on this project so that we can go through construction documents and get construction phase documents done, um, for this project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there's any questions.
Can you pull up the schedule that you put together, or Matt, can you pull that up, just in terms of like when we're looking at? Because it, one of the questions we had was the timing, right, in terms of ideally, we have something that's available at the start of next, um, spring, or, you know, kind of that, that time when people might be using outdoors. And so I, I think one of the questions that council had was kind of looking at this view, saying, okay, what about the phase one? Acknowledging that there's, you know, it, it's gonna be tight to, to get this done in that timeframe, but, you know, it's possible if we wanna move forward with it. Um, but can you just talk about this just a little bit?
Sure. So the first phase of the project would obviously be any environmental controls, any kind of site, kind of, um, you know, basically creating the barrier for the site so that people aren't walking through it. And then, of course, we would be putting in infrastructure items, things that are gonna be underground. So all of the, any water lines going to, um, wa, um, water fountains, any kind of irrigation hubs, anything we need in that area. During that time, too, we would also be working on the community garden fence and replacing the community garden fence. That, we're still working on some of the details on how we would, um, do that. It's likely the fence may, the area may grow slightly larger by like a foot or two on each side so that we could put the fence up so that we're not impacting the gardeners, um, by taking down a fence and then, you know, the deer and everything get to everybody's food. Then after those two things are done, then we would move on to the trail and concrete work, um, getting those in place. And at the same time, kind of simultaneously, the playground and the shade structure during that November through January period would also be going in as well. Once those are kind of just heading down and wrapping up toward the end, that's when we would be building that, getting the fire pit area and any site furnishings. The last thing of any kind of project is always the landscaping. That would be, um, that would go in before we kind of had like, you know, ribbon, ribbon cutting and that kind of thing that would happen in connecting all the irrigation. So that is what we kind of, we have called phase one of the project. Kind of start to finish from securing the site and setting up the site through that landscaping and irrigation, kind of getting it completed. For that, we would use some temp labor, especially for the community garden fence and some of that trail and concrete work. And we'd obviously have a subcontractor, somebody who would be doing the playground. We would hire a mason to do a fire pit. And, um, the irrigation, we would work with Texas Gapes to help with that irrigation system there. And then what we are calling phase two is really that labyrinth construction. And we kind of, um, put it in during June and July, thinking that, um, the Summer Youth Program, that would be a great project for them to help lay out and do all of that. But any plantings with that, we're obviously not gonna plant anything during the summertime period. Any plantings would shift over to the fall. And similarly with the orchard, any, anything like that would be Arbor Day planting. And those, it may be that we have those kind of move out just slightly, too, just depending on, um, funding and things like that, that it would, when, when the timeline for those items would be.
Just in terms of the schedule that we currently have before us, if we move forward, that gets us through the construction documentation, that gets us ready for essentially the work in October.
We're hoping, yeah.
If we decided not to do that until the next, the fiscal year approval, then that would kind of shift things out, you know, a, a couple months or whatever the, the impact would be. Okay.
Yeah, once we have the construction documents, we'll be able to, Carolyn and the team will be able to have a, you know, a bet, a better idea of, of the actual phasing, right? It's just, it's, you know, but until we have those construction documents, we can't get super detailed.
With all the little pieces that have to be done.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll start with Councilor Johnson, and we'll go to, we'll just go down the row. So, Councilor Burrell, and then Councilor Rosengard.
Sure. Um, first, Matt, how, how much money is there in that Urban County pool? Do we have any idea how much?
I, I do not. I literally, like, you know, they, they, I believe they emailed us like May twenty-second, and, you know, so I have really not had time to look into what the potential, what the potential funding.
This is totally something that we could use this money for?
I mean, if we didn't, I mean, there's also those grants we were talking about earlier today, would anything?
Possibly, yeah.
But we would have to delay. If we wanted to, if we wanted to go for like, let's say, a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant, you know, we could do that. Um, it would just, would, we would want to probably not start then the groundwork in October. We'd wanna wait to see if we.
I will say with that, though, you do need plans to move forward.
So, yeah.
You would still need plans.
We would need the, we would need the construction documents to show the Texas Parks and Wildlife, hey, this is what we want to build.
Got a project ready to go.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm less grumpy than I was two weeks ago. But can, um, can we also talk to, to men for this?
Yeah, Carrie is here.
I, I don't know if there was a separate presentation. So, the, yeah, so, like, we, we have resources, and it, sometimes it feels silly to have as many resources and then still push back on some things. But, and it was good, it was good seeing that list of other parks and like, some of those are existing parks, and they're just kind of like refitting them, and it's still like more than what we're spending. But, uh, at, at first I had a note that was like, uh, in the future, can you help us be like the bad guy? But it's not the bad guy, it's just like providing like a reality check to people that are filling stuff out. Just so it's like, is there, is there any mention of, of like budgets? Or like what these things can possibly cost, like when, when they fill in? I, I don't go to these things. It's just like, like my wife will go to it and stuff like that. But for some reason, I'm just like, let everyone else talk, and then like, I'll be this guy that sits up here. But, so, yeah, I, well, actually, I did do the one, the one was, um, for the open parks. But there's no talk of budget there either. So, um, I think that would maybe be helpful just in the future. So it's like, hey, sky's the limit, you know, what would you have? Okay, now what if you knew that it would cost this much? And then people, you know, because I don't wanna stop people from dreaming, but also, I don't want them to, at some point, see like, whatever happened with all that input? And it's like, oh, we got nothing, like, the system screwed up. It's like, no, these things cost money. So, uh, I guess first, ki, uh, there's that. And then I'm also wondering like, what are, what other things maybe were like thrown in, or that the, the community wanted? And even you guys were like, no, like, that's ridiculous, like, we're not gonna do that. Well.
Oh, and splash pad.
A water feature.
Like splash pads, things like that.
Okay.
A splash pad, we said, nope.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just, uh, for your, for your first question, I think that's a really good idea. And I think, you know, we're kind of continuing to figure out how we do community engagement in, in this community and how we work best with you all. And I really like that idea. And I could see in the future, would we approach, you know, maybe the Uplands or another design project? We say, at a community engagement meeting, you know, let's have a budgeting exercise. Pretend you have five hundred thousand dollars to spend. We have eight hundred thousand dollars worth of ideas and equipment and installations here. Prioritize.
Yeah.
And then they can kind of see what the trade-offs are. And then we can use that information when we ultimately have to run up against a budget to say, well, when we ask the community members to help prioritize based on price and cost and what they want, this is what we learned, and this is how we can make those decisions based on that. So I think that's a great idea, and it's something that we can integrate into, into future community meetings.
Yeah, it was, it was a, it was a different kind of exercise, but I do remember at the open parks thing where you were giving like five dollars, and I shoved all five dollars into the pool.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so much for that. But, all right, cool, thank you.
Yeah, the second part of that question, too, was it just related to the, the pool, or was it other elements that you're curious?
Well, no, they said, it was like a splash pad, anything with water, extra plumbing, pumps.
But I think one thing that really, maybe it had sort of been considered, but it was like a resounding, like every, almost everyone in the audience mentioned it, was the shade. And that, the shade does that, I mean, that is adding cost to put the shade over the, is it the playground and the picnic area? But that was like a result, like, everybody was like, please, build shade, I mean, for good, for good measure.
Councilor Burrell?
Thank you. Uh, I'd, I'd like to make a comment that, uh, Public Works Committee has considered this project and the budget and has, uh, been affirmative.
Councilor Rosengard?
First off, I would like to have more, uh, ideas of the localized, uh, items and what their cost is. So let me have a little fun with this first off. So when I looked at this, and there's a statement in there that says, "With the exception of the playground, exercise area, shade structure, and garden fence, no single item is a large expenditure within the project." To me, that read, it's like saying with the exception of foundation, framing, rough-in, roof, no single item is a large expense. So when you start taking the items out that are the large expense, then it concerns me as to why don't we know what the large expenses are and what the dollar amount is for each one? So for instance, the, uh, garden fence, there's gotta be an idea of.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars.
How much?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand, thank you.
We are going to ask the community garden, I mean, they don't have much in terms of funds, but we are going to ask for cost participation, because they do collect.
It, it's not a whole lot.
They do collect dues, but, I mean, I think they have.
It's forty dollars for a block.
Yeah, so they've collected over a number of years, and I know in the past we've had discussions with them, because they've been wanting a fence for a long time.
Well, I, I got with a contractor and walked the property and got a bid.
So, yeah, and the fence, I mean, that fence is over twenty years old at this point. So it's held up amazingly well. But I know that we've talked in the past, and they do have some money they've collected that I think they would be willing to, like I said, it's not a lot of money, but they would probably give a couple thousand, basically, to kind of offset a little bit of the cost.
I know the extent of what the fence is going to take. Pulling that fence down, there's a lot of stuff that's already growing within that fence. We're gonna destroy a lot of plants that have been growing for a long time, some ivies and some, there's some trees there. Why couldn't we put the fence, now I realize that we don't, um, the city garden would grow. Put a fence on the outside of the fence and around, so we don't have to tear down what's already been growing.
That's one of the discussions we have, because that's what I meant by the garden area may grow a little bit, because it may grow by a few feet, because we will more than likely build the fence on the outside. And then if there's sections that they wanna keep that have ivies and stuff that they wanna keep, that can definitely stay there. But if there's sections that, like probably around the gate areas, those are gonna have to come out so that we can have good access. But the, the fence will be built on the outside of that existing fence. Like I said, it's gonna grow by, you know, a couple feet on each side, basically, just to, to accommodate that.
Like I said, because there's a lot of nice plants already growing. Uh, the fire pit, do we have a breakdown as to what the fire pit area costs?
I think it's a couple thousand, I don't remember exactly, but it wasn't a lot for a, a masonry fire pit.
Well, I have concerns for the fire pit. Now, it's one thing when a, when a bed and breakfast puts out a fire pit and so on, but the owners are there. The owners are gonna make sure that everything is taken care of before everybody goes to bed.
Right.
When you have a city fire pit, who's there to make sure somebody put out the fire?
So this is gonna be a fire pit similar to what Mueller has, that has a lock on it, and you can only use it by permit. And it has to be, you're basically taking responsibility for that through permit. I know Mueller has one, the city of Buta actually has one, too, but, um, they don't have, you, you have to, you know, request to use it, but it doesn't have a locking mechanism on top. So that will be something that the city would have to enforce.
And I did, I, I spoke with both Chief and Carolyn, and they, like, Chief was not opposed to the, the fire pit, uh, from a public safety standpoint.
No, I didn't see it as any more dangerous than someone smoking on the nature trail. I was in San Diego recently, and they had them all along the waterfront and in the park by the beach. I was in San Diego recently, and they had them all along the waterfront and in the park by the beach. They just put pad logs on them that you could rent them out.
Okay. And then a labyrinth, how much does a labyrinth cost?
I can't give you an exact number on the labyrinth. I can't give you an exact number on the labyrinth, because that's included in the, some of the hardscape numbers, and that's included in the landscaping numbers. So, there's not any, I don't have an exact just for the labyrinth portion. But if we looked at that just from a linear foot of trail and linear, you know, kind of cute, square footage of landscaping, maybe we could come up with a number, but...
And then the last question, maintenance costs. I don't see anything up there.
We did that last time, it's 600, $6,300 or $500, I can't read from here. Sixty-five hundred. So, that would include some work with Texascape, doing some of the grounds, the maintenance of the landscaping beds. We would have to put in mulch every year, just to refill kitty surfacing right there, and just general maintenance, playground equipment, you know, nuts, bolts, that kind of stuff.
And replacement when items need to be replaced?
So, that's a question that's gonna be, that we, you know, the council needs to consider regarding repair and replacement budget for future items for any kind of, every item around the city that we have. So, this would include the docks playground, and, and, you know, this, this playground in particular, and how much we invest in repair and replacement over years. I think Carrie may have some more information on the playground, though. Do you, do you have something?
I, oh, well, I was, I was able to talk to the playground manufacturer today from what we specified, and they said that it is warranted up to 10 years, but they, but the product itself lasts typically 15 to 20 years, which is generally what you would see for any type of playground equipment, regardless of the material.
Mayor Prette?
Yes, I am done, thank you.
First, I wanted to say I agree with Councilmember Johnson about setting budgets for projects. I think that's something we should do from now on with every single project, and say, here is our target budget. We may end up spending more or less as we go through the project, but I think it's very good for us and for whoever is working with us that they know this is the, this is the price range we want to stay in for any project. Secondly, on maintenance costs, if I remember correctly, the cost for the playground was somewhere between a hundred, or the playground equipment was somewhere between $130,000 and $140,000?
Yes, for all the playground, for the playground equipment, yes. That doesn't, that's not the installation cost, but just the equipment cost.
Right. So, assuming it lasts 20 years, you could say that the maintenance cost for that is $6,500 to $7,000 a year.
For replacement.
Right. So, that should be considered as, as part of replacement costs above and beyond what you already have there, I think. Last meeting, I expressed all my concerns about the cost of this, and while I am very, very much in favor of investing in the future of the city, and I think this is a great project that we should do, I still have those concerns about costs. And I understand that parks are expensive. But the question is, what do we want to spend our money on? You know, among this and many other projects? We have to, we have to figure out what the right balance is. And I think we need to look at this project and say, because I, like Parks and Open Space and Reimagine Brody, to me, this is a smorgasbord of things we could do. Do we want to do all these things in this particular project? I think we need to have a discussion about that. For me personally, I'd like to see us just do like the playground, the shading, the necessary infrastructure around that, and then go out and see what the reaction of the community is to it, and then ask ourselves, is it worth investing more? I mean, that's a question I think we should, in that discussion, we may decide, yes, we're gonna do all these things, but I think we should have that discussion. I think it's great that we can do a lot of this work in-house, and that probably contributes to cutting down on costs. But we've been spending an awful lot of money on engineers and consultants, and I'm wondering if we should consider and look into, can we develop some of that expertise so we can do these things in-house for cheaper? Instead of paying a lot of money, as we have over the last couple of years, to engineers and consultants? But I do want to emphasize, I think this is a great project, I think we should do it, but I think we should carefully decide exactly what we want to do here.
Carolyn, just in a kind of follow-up to that, if we decided, for example, to do this in increments, right, you know, would we want to go ahead with, would we want to scale down the construction documents, or would we want to have like the full version so that we could select later on to actually...
You would still want to do the full construction documents all at one time.
Okay. So, that would still give us the option to pull back and say, do we want to move forward with just, instead of phase one being everything, including the fire pit, it includes, you know, those elements that, I don't remember where we had it. But, you know, the, the things that we want to move, we select to move forward with, like, as a council. So, that maybe, you know, so we get, as we go forward in the project, we say, okay, budget time, let's, you know, based on council feedback, community feedback, let's start with this. Okay. Councilor Metekes?
I, I agree, we should do the construction documents, especially if we're gonna look at any kind of grant funding, because without a plan, a specific plan, you're not gonna get any grant money. So, and we can, we could look at, when we have more detail, we could look at and say, let's just do A, B, C, and D, or 1, 2, 3, and 4, and then we'll wait and do 5, 6, and 7, and just see how it goes. But without the construction documents and knowing the detail where we can really get some, our teeth into what it really will cost, I don't, I don't think we can really make a decision.
Are there questions before opening up to the members of the public? Councilor Rosengard?
I've always been told, once you get to construction documents, it's too late to change your mind.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up for members of the public to, to speak. If you can step up to the podium.
Okay, Burton Pearson, 39 Pillow Road. I just wanted to say that we have expertise to use here. We have an outstanding Public Works Department. We've got an outstanding opportunity with Men here, both for landscape architectural work as well as for these larger restoration projects, which we're taking under, gonna undertake, which I think will put us on the map in many important ways. So, I want to suggest that we take this task order, and we break it down into smaller segments of task orders, so that we can have Men use their landscape architect expertise at this point on those aspects of the backyard that most requires the help of a landscape architect. For example, I imagine the playground is a more intensive landscape architectural type work than is deciding the boundaries of the orchard, or maybe even the maze itself. Later, we're gonna need, we have financial, I mean, a finite amount of financial funds. Later, we're gonna need some real funding if we're gonna carry through with the restoration projects that we've scheduled. And Men will be involved in that and need money to go ahead and hire the experts that they're gonna need to hire to go ahead with those projects. So, when you take a project and you break it into smaller units, you have more flexibility if something unexpected comes up. And so, I just think it would be better to take the overall task order, break it down, let's get Men to work on what we really need them for now. You know, the, the first parts of this project that require most of their efforts, and later then, we will, we can see where we want to have them apply both their landscape architecture expertise, as well as their expertise, you know, in the restoration projects. I know that Public Works is overwhelmed in many ways. They're doing an outstanding job, and we don't want Public Works to end up having to do actual work and restoration so much, because that would be very work-intensive for them. So, maybe we could use them for some other aspect, but anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Reese. I am persuaded, and I, and I came here with a much more Rob last week frame of reference. But, but I am, having written some, some grants in my time, I am persuaded, as long as that's where we're going, by the idea of having the plans, as, as Councilmember Metekes said, to proceed. I, I really do think, and I would like to for the future, do things like, I suspect that we could get the playground company to design this for us, you know, if we were just doing this on a separate thing. But I think we are considering looking at grants. I think we are, that there's, there's at least two avenues that I've heard that we might want to do, and you have to be ready to go if you're gonna do the grants. You need to have, you, you need that in your back pocket. So, I don't want to be, you know, that, that penny wise, pound foolish kind of situation, where, yeah, I think we're paying maybe 10 grand too much for this project, that if we had diced it differently, we can save 10 grand. But if we can be able to get 60 grand from a grant, or 100 grand for a grant, then I don't want to fuss over 10 grand, you know? So, that's kind of the, this is where I've moved to from where I came from. And so, I, I really want to compliment Carolyn on the backup that she did, because that certainly helped me move from where I was to where I am. And, and, and I'm not at all dissing our consultants, but I, I think this is about staff management for how we perhaps go forward, and what chunks we give away, and, and how we limit, you know, various consultant costs as we move forward, that we take out what we're gonna do in-house on the front end, and then your percentages go down. So, that's, that's really where I'm coming from, if, if I was gonna pick nits. But I'm not picking nits in this case, because I think we need to have what we need to have in order to file these potential documents, if, if we are, in fact, gonna pursue grants. It's not true, if we're not gonna pursue grants, then I think it's a different perspective. But if we're gonna try and pursue grants, we need the documents, and we need the plans, and we need to hit the ground running with that, and we need to do that in this, in this timeframe, so we get this cycle. So, that's, that's my two cents. I will say I'm, I'm persuaded. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So, Council, now that we've gone through and heard the discussion and the, and the feedback, what I'd like to do is table this item to return to it for possible action. One of the actions that we could take is approving the budget amendment for the task order to move forward with construction documents. But we will take that up once we've gone through a Gen 9 number 10, which is the time-certain item, the, the presentation and possible acceptance of the 2021, 2022 fiscal financial audit by Haney and Company. And so, we'll hand it over to staff and Haney and Company to give us an introduction to this item and a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. John from Haney and Company is here, and we, I emailed you all the final version of the audit, I believe over the, I believe yesterday, they sent it to us over the weekend. And the Budget and Finance Committee reviewed this. Beth, who worked on the audit from Haney and Company, she was there to answer questions, and we had a discussion, I believe that was in, on May 16th, after the joint work session with council. So, the Budget and Finance Committee did recommend you all to accept the audit, and they had one, one, one edit which was, which was made, so. John, I'll pass it over to you. Oh, is the green light on?
Yes, thank you. Pleasure to be with you today, and I'll be brief. A high-level report on the audit of the financial statements. This is for the year ended September 30th, 2022. And we have, if you go to page 2, the very first paragraph of page 2, opinions, is the, basically, our audit opinion. We say that we've audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities and the business-type activities, the aggregated discreetly presented component unit, and each major fund of the city of Sunset Valley exists as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2022, and the notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the city's basic financial statements as listed in the Table of Contents. And that we, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component unit, and each major fund of the city as of September 30th, 2022, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. We call this up an unmodified opinion. There are pretty, basically, three different types of opinions that, that we could issue. And this is considered the basic opinion. On page 2 or 3 of this report, just where those bullet points are, the report lays out what we do in an audit in general. You'll notice when I was reading our opinion, we state that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We, we say that because we're not able to go in and audit 100% of all transactions, so there's possibility that there could be misstatements. But we believe that if there are, that they wouldn't be material, based on the, the sampling that we did and the, the coverage we were able to, to, to cover. So, in these bullet points, what we do in an audit is we express professional judgment, and we try to maintain professional skepticism throughout the engagement. We also use a risk-based approach to our audits. We specifically identify those areas of the audit that are more susceptible to fraud and error. And we design our procedures to, to, to address those, those areas. That's, that's the, that's the risk assessment piece. And then, in the third bullet, we obtain an understanding of internal controls. So, we, we review and walk through your, your internal control processes to gain an understanding of those controls, and to get a feel for whether or not their working is designed. And we also use it as a basis for determining the extent of our auditing procedures. You know, if they're not really good controls, we'll do more work. If they're really good controls, and we do our testing, and we find that the controls are in place, we tend to not have to do quite as much work in that area. We also evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness of significant accounting, accounting estimates made by management, as well as evaluate the overall presentation of the financial statements. And then we also conclude whether, in our judgment, there are conditions or events considered in the aggregate that raise or stop doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern for a reasonable period of time. I think you'll see is, as you look through the numbers, that, that the financial position of the city is, is, looks, looks quite good. So, the, you know, the risk of a going concern isn't something that we consider to, to be an issue. On page 5 is the start of the, of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is a, this is a, basically, an analysis of the financial statements, financial highlights that is prepared by your management. And, you know, we helped them put this together, but it's, it's, it's theirs. And then we make sure that the financial information is consistent with financial statements that were subject to our auditing procedures, which begin on page 14. I'm not gonna go into, into the actual financials. I want to instead, at a higher level, review the, the combined financials as they're presented, starting on page 9 of the, of the MDNA, the Management's Discussion and Analysis. Just want to draw out some, some relationships here that I hope we'll, we'll find helpful. So, we ended the year 2022 with a total net position, that's equity, of $54,495,885. That's up from the year before of $52,19,902. So, your, your, the equity of the city increased by about 2.5 million over the prior year. And a lot of that is, is in current assets, which is cash. We also had some, some purchases of, of capital assets, infrastructure. The net position, or the equity, is made up of three parts. The most significant part is the investment in your capital asset infrastructure. The most significant part is the investment in your capital asset infrastructure, which is net of depreciation. That was about $900,000. Then you have restricted $2 million. And then $17 million is unrestricted, which is available for, for general use. If you turn to page 10, page 10 is a aggregated income statement by, by governmental, governmental activities and business type activities. The total city revenue for the total, for the year was 8.7 million. That was, that's up about 900,000 from 7.8 million in the prior year. Your expenses were, also went up by about the same from 5.2 million in 2021 to 6.2 million. So net income was about 2.5 million compared to 2.6 million in the year before. So it, it edged down slightly. The business type activities, the primary sources of revenue there are the charges for services. In the governmental activities, the primary sources of revenue are your sales taxes. And the sales taxes went up by about 700, 600. It was one of the, the largest increases in the, in the revenue. Now, what I'd like to do very quickly is just kind of show you, compared to budget, how your governmental funds, how we did in the governmental funds compared to budget. So if you turn to page 53, so the, the general fund, the, the budget, the final budget was about 4.5 million. And the city ended up exceeding its budget by about 1.5 million to 600, or about 6 million. And then your expenditures were, were budgeted to be 4.3 million. And we ended up spending about 3.9 million. So, you know, ended up spending about 500,000 less than what was budgeted. So when you combine the, the income increase, basically the variance, with the, the decrease in, in expenditures or the difference in expenditures, you actually had a positive budget variance of 1.9 million, meaning you did better from budget by about $1.9 million net. Turn to page 54. This is the Street Repair and Replacement Fund. The city had budgeted about 785,000 in total revenues for that year. And it actually brought in one, about a million. So did better by about 234,000. Expenditures were also, were more, they were about, no, were less, by about $50,000 or $45,000. So our net positive variance in the Street Repair and Replacement Fund was 900, I'm sorry, was $280,000. Turn to page 55. Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund. Again, we had another positive year in that fund. Total revenue was budgeted to be 177,000. Ultimately ended up being 234,000. So we, we were above budget on revenue by about 57,000. On expenses, had budgeted about 304,000, actually budgeted for a $127,000 loss. We actually ended up in positive territory and actually ended up having a net income of 5,833. So a positive net income variance of 133,000. Next page, 56. The Green Sales Tax Fund. Did better than, than estimated. Budget was 371,000. We came in at 490,000. That's $118,000 better than what was budgeted. On the expenditure side, 1.2 million was budgeted for expenditure. And you spent 1.1 million, which is about 107,000 less than what was budgeted. So the net positive variance is $226,000. And then finally on page 57, the City Facilities Fund, not much activity there. There were some expenditures that were budgeted, no income that was budgeted. There's just interest income. Ended up with a net positive variance of $729, which was the, the interest because you spent what was, what was budgeted in that, in that budget. That's all I have unless you have some questions.
Councilor Rosengard?
The City Facilities Fund, that should be zeroed out by now, right?
Correct, yeah. We, I believe we closed the fund in fiscal year 23. So, or actually in, I think we closed it in 20. I don't think it appeared in the fiscal year 23 budget. I don't believe so. But yes, it is, yeah, it is, it is closed out. I, I will say, just because the Budget and Finance Committee asked this, so if you, at the end of the, the audit, there is the, the Schedule of Findings. And we had the same comment that we had in the previous, in the FY21 audit, which was the inadequate reconciliation of due to, do from balances. Unfortunately, we'll probably see that again in FY23 because just as a reminder, FY23, we were still using M I P, the old accounting system. But this whole due to, do from issue has gone away since we have adopted Tyler ERP. That is now, the due to, do froms between the different funds are all happening in the background. Now, we do not have actual multiple bank accounts, taxable accounts for the funds. We consolidated all of the funds except for the crime control because that is a special revenue fund. So that is our only separate taxable account. But again, the, the financial software that you all approved is keeping track of all of that, so.
Councilor Johnson?
Just for my own education here, there's, when you were going through the Required Supplemental Information, Schedule of Revenues, Expenditures, et cetera, why is the CCPD not in there? The Crime Control Fund? Like why, like how is that one different from the rest of them? That it wouldn't show up here?
You're talking about the, hold on.
It's a, it's a, it's listed in this as a component unit.
Yeah, because that's not a governmental fund. It isn't, it isn't considered R S I, Required Supplementary Information. However, it is in here. I just didn't go over it.
Yeah, I found it in like another section, but I was just wondering, okay. So it's just not required for?
It's not required, but it's in there anyway.
Okay.
Under the Unrequired Supplemental.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, the, the other, the proprietary funds. So the utility, utility fund drainage that will be also found in the supplemental information.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you very much for the reports. And counsel, this has been reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee as stated. So this is something that they recommended acceptance of in their last meeting. We can take a motion to accept the, the financial audits. Councilor Johnson?
Sure. I move we accept the FY 2021, 2022 Financial Audit by Haney and Company.
Is there a second for that? Mayor, for 10 seconds. Any further discussion? I think we may have a member of the public that wishes to speak. So we'll go ahead and open that up as part of the, the discussion for the, the motion. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody to say what a difference experience this has been of the audit than recent audits. So I want to applaud our accounting manager. I want to applaud Finance Committee. And I want to applaud counsel and all the staff for what an extraordinary different experience we are now having of our audit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah. And thank you for all the hard work, staff. I know that's, it's important, but it also takes a lot of time. Hopefully easier with future audits in terms of the new software, being able to make that, that process go smoother. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. All right. So counsel, we're going to resume our discussion of agenda number 11. This is the possible action on the City Hall Backyard Project and potential task order amendment. And so counsel, if we have further questions about this or if we want to move forward with authorization of the construction documents with the, you know, the, the later decisions about what to move forward within terms of the actual project. I do want us to pursue grants for this project. I want to see if we can get a supplemental funding, either from Travis County, as we just talked about, which are still, you know, that's new information for us, or from some of the other agencies that have been notified. And recognizing that having a plan can be a crucial component of that. Certainly, I, I perceive this as a beneficial step to move forward with, especially if we want to have something potentially, you know, that would be accessible starting in the spring, like a playground and some of the other kind of basic equipment that, that folks seem to be in agreement on. So I would like to certainly see this move forward in, in stages as well. Councilor Medikas?
Put my glasses off for this. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the City Hall Backyard Project, we approve a task order amendment for Men Collaborative to do an ordinance amending the fiscal year 23, 24 budget to move forward construction documents and finalize them.
And there's a motion to approve the task order amendments and the budget amendment that would be part of that? Is there a second for that motion? Councilor Burrell? That opens up for further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
If you ask me, like where I would save money on this, I don't know what I would do. I mean, it's like the typical thing where it's just like, this is a lot. But I don't want to take anything away from it. And I'm pretty chicken explosive because of that. But, which I totally get. So, so I'm going to ask one of my fellow council members to throw themselves out there when, when the, when the perfect project is up in construction documents and it's time to finally say, let's go. And we know how much grants we're getting, to have some number in your, your mind that says like, that seems about right. Like if we are, if Sunset Valley spends $400,000 on this and we get all the stuff that's in there, that sounds right. I don't know what that number is. I think it was just like sticker shock and I just, in, in a few months, I'll just get over it and be ready to move. But I will listen to compelling arguments otherwise.
I don't think it's, it certainly is appropriate to have, I mean, it is appropriate to have financial considerations at the forefront of our mind and taking it in a chromal stages in conjunction with whatever grant funding we might be able to access or the knowledge that we can access grant funding. I think those are all important considerations. And so I certainly appreciate your input, the rest of the council's input in terms of let's, let's make sure that this is right sized for the city. There is a lot of good ideas here. I certainly think that this is going to be a beneficial part of the city that could even attract, you know, more, more people to our city that might, you know, take advantage of not only our businesses, but our trails and, and, you know, the enjoyment that we can provide. It has to be measured against, you know, what is the, the financial reality? And, and that picture will obviously get clearer the closer we get to, to the actual activation of the project. So I appreciate your, your input.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to comment. So as, you know, I, I think there's consensus that we want to move forward with looking at grant opportunities. Again, we're going to have to research what the Travis County Urban Program would be able to provide. Carolyn, Danielle and myself were looking at Texas Parks and Wildlife Grants today. We were considering pursuing that possibly for 6107 Brody Lane for that project, but we could expand that to include the City Hall. So I think as we move forward with budget, as we, we will present the project budget to Budget and Finance Committee early July. So hopefully that gives us a month to kind of see maybe what grants we're able to apply for. I know we were looking at some of the due dates where like, I think there's some due dates like August 1st, and then they had additional due dates later in the year. So, you know, that could be a pretty quick turnaround for construction documents to try to, for August 1st, but it's, it's a possibility. But we'll have more information on what grants we may try to pursue as we potentially fund this for the FY25 budget.
Councilor Burrell and then Councilor Medikas?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the fiscal concerns. As a fairly conservative fiscal person myself, I, I'm especially grateful for that. But on the other hand, I don't want to overlook the, you know, the fact that, you know, we're a diverse community and this is a very diverse project in terms of the activities that are, and the resources that are going to be created. And while I, I will use some and not others, but there are others. I think I can see that the broad swath of the community utilizing all of the, the features that are here. I certainly am not going to be using the exercise equipment. I can guarantee you that. But, but there are people clearly that will. And so I, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about the project. Again, like Councilman Sir, Member Johnson, I'm, I don't see anything that's, that I would necessarily cut. And I think the price, I mean, the price is the price. So, but I, I would personally support funding the entire thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Medikas and then Councilor Rosengard?
Well, speaking of that, having come from a fundraising background, not only just grants from like Texas Parks and Wildlife, but there was, two years ago, I guess, Home Depot was going to give us money to do the community garden fencing and that got all tangled up with the kind of fence they wanted and it just went away. But they're very pro things that relate to children. And so they may sponsor the playground if they could put a Home Depot sign on it. I mean, just saying, there's other opportunities too. So they were interested in working with us just two years ago. So if we're not tied up with what the community garden fencing looks like, then there might be other projects that would be more appropriate to have them be partners with.
Thank you for that input. Councilor Rosengard?
Within the $537,000, is there money set inside there for our in-house public works staff who's going to be working on this?
Do you mean is our labor in there?
Yes.
No, labor is not in, in that $537,000.
$537,000 is for, there would be some temp labor that we would be considering for some of it.
But it would be mostly the purchasing of equipment and items and things like that.
And labor's not even included in this?
No, labor is not included, no. If labor was included, you're looking at those numbers that you see for the Austin parks.
But that's, that's really, truthfully, any project should have labor included in that also, even if it's done in-house. We should have an idea that if we had to do it out.
It's about, it's about a million dollars. Because, yeah, I mean, you can even see that when the, the numbers I showed for those projects in Austin, a lot of them were actually smaller and they're in the $800,000 range.
I feel good that we're saving money, but at the same time, I would wish it was a little lower than 537. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think we have a more open time for public comments. Go ahead, please.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 Rees. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Rosengard. She's actually addressing something that I was thinking and I, I'm now going to say it out loud, is that when we apply for the grants, they generally require us to have contributions from the city. And I think it is very important that we, that we have those numbers articulated because that becomes part of our contribution to the project and saves us. and saves us the cash thing and it's, it's the, the labor match. So I really do think we want to keep all those figures as part of our match to, to save the money. And so probably somebody knows that, but if they don't know that, I wanted to say it out loud just because it's important. Thank you. And if anybody wants elaboration, I'm happy to do it offline.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
I don't know if I'd commit that $1 million to memory. I mean, like, that is, at, at $537,000 and then it's like $460,000, that's like everyone in public work, well, well, besides like.
We, I mean, Carrie, when we first did it, we were looking at contracting for everything and it was about. Did the initial cost estimation using, you know, if we were to contract everything out, it was about 800K. That includes contractors, they mark up the cost of all of the, all of the furnishings, all the items, and then the cost of the labor and their profit and so.
So that's more like turnkey, like you give us $800,000, we give you a park, right? So, but the thing is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, I don't think it, I don't think the full cost is a million dollars. I mean, it would be, it would be less than $800,000.
It'd be, it was between eight and nine, I think, when we were looking at it. So, when we were looking at a contractor cost.
But for like Sunset Valley, I, I'm sorry, not, not to trip us up on this, but it's like for our employees to be working on that is not going to be.
No, this is the contractor, what it would toss a contractor.
So when you said a million dollars all in, plus, it would be less than 800, it seems like, for like our employees' time, if you just like.
Like their salaries.
Yeah, their salaries and it's like what is devoted to like the, the construction. So I just didn't want, I didn't want the.
Yeah, no, this would be the contractor if we were hiring everything out, basically, would be that.
Okay, but I, I think what the question was is if you, or the way I took Rudy's question was like, how much of our people's.
No, well, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that, that I do not have exactly, exactly, our numbers. No, that was the contractor, like, if we were going to hire everything out, that would be how much it would cost.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Well, I don't know, maybe that's what the question was. I understood, that's the way I understood it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I think to the resident's comment, it might be important to have the document of what our contribution would be in.
Yeah, the in-kind services.
Exactly, yeah, for helpful for grant applications, so.
Yeah.
You can use that, we can use that amount as the in-kind, even though, yes, our employees don't make as much as a contractor would make. That's, I mean, that's the true like cost of the project is that 850K number. Yeah. And we'll add the, and we'll add the 40K plus the 90, you know, we'll add that, that's all in the total cost of the project.
We, we also don't have to account for profit, like, there's no, there's no, you know.
Further discussion on this motion before we take a vote on it? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, so we approved the task order amendment and the budget amendment for move forward with the construction documents and we will bring this back during the budget cycle. Obviously, we're going to take this to budget finance as part of the iteration, but we'll have more information as we go forward before we do the full funding and the, the budget as well. Councilor Rosengard?
What I'd like to see on this project is, I want, when everything is done, we need to see the total project with all the expenses, line item by line item, and what it costs us as a city for our city employees to be doing their share of the work. How many hours did they dedicate to this, so we know in the end what this really costs.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely track that.
Okay. Alright, so council, we have one more agenda item, which is a discussion item only. This is going to be a presentation discussion of the Reimagine Brody project, including the feedback that we received from the standing committees and the arts commission on, well, what was designated as Phase 1A of the project, which is essentially the western pathway or, or sidewalk from 290 down to Home Depot Boulevard. And so we'll, we'll have that, you know, brought up. But this was requested by the council to take this to the committees to get their feedback, which is included in the backup, and then determine in what direction to give to staff as far as next steps or potential next steps. So with that, I'll hand it over to staff who collected that feedback and give a brief update to us.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, this was taken to all five of the standing committees, starting with Public Works and then moving on down. I sent you all revised cover page. My apologies, I missed the arts commission, so just wanted to make sure you all saw that. Theirs was pretty much in line with the other committees with the 25, with at least a 25% overall reduction in cost, but they're wanting to work with mend on the public art pieces and locations and types of art, things of that nature. And you all can read the other, or have read hopefully the other committee feedback. But overall, I would say generally the consensus was, yes, the committees would like to see at a minimum a 25% reduction of costs. P and E, the Planning Environmental Committee, made a recommendation that, because one area we could significantly reduce costs was rather than pursuing some of the custom lighting that AREP, that was chosen by AREP and selected from the, the choices and the community feedback, you know, they looked really nice, but they're, they're very, very expensive. And at least for the streetlight portions, if we go with custom lighting, the city would then need to take on the maintenance for those. So they, the Planning Environmental Committee recommended using the, the city of Austin, kind of the standard streetlights. We will, if we're going to install Ballard lights, which I think is an important aspect of the project for pedestrian and cyclist safety, those will need to be maintained by the city. No, they won't? Yeah, yeah, they, they will be Sunset Valley lights, but, but, yeah, the, the green, yeah, the green lights, which they, basically Austin has a small number of streetlights that you can select, too. They have two lights that you can select from, so it would be utilizing the, the designs that, that we already have. But the Ballard lights would, you know, which are, I think, an important part of the project, those would need to be, if I'm not mistaken, maintained by us, but we will probably be looking at utilizing a cheaper option than the ones currently considered in the plan. So I just wanted to kind of show the phases as an overview, kind of give the staff recommendation. Okay, here we go. So let me try to make this larger. So after the, kind of, hearing the committee feedback, and again, council was really interested in if we're going to pursue this, that we would start with Phase 1A. It has, you know, it's kind of the quintessential piece of the project. It has, it encompasses the urban, Phase 1A encompasses the urban section of the Violet Crown Trail and a little bit of 1D, although some of the Home Depot Boulevard intersection improvements are part of another project that's in the works. But Phase 1A really is that, you know, urban section of the Violet Crown Trail. It has, you know, separated and some combined pedestrian and bicycle facilities. I would, you know, staff's recommendation is, you know, if, if we're going to move forward with the project, you would move forward with Phase 1A and elements, I think, of Phase 1D, not the major, you know, not the raised intersection, but just at least making sure that the crosswalk, you know, the modernized signalization and, and good crosswalks so that Violet Crown Trail users will be able to cross from the west to the east side. And then continuing on down, I think, for continuity, because that's some, some of the feedback we also heard from the committees is, well, if you only do one piece and you don't do the rest, then you just kind of have a, you know, you have one section of the road that looks great and then the rest, and then there's no, there's no connection, there's no, there's no follow-through. So that, that's, that's, that could potentially be a negative, a negative aspect. So staff would recommend if you're going to fund Phase 1A, then plan on future years, funding Phase 2A and then Phase 3A. And it does, those costs get significantly, the, the opinion of probable cost gets significantly cheaper the further down Brody Lane you go, further south. And also on Phase 2A, because a lot of that is city-owned property into the nature area, that's also where we could pursue some grant opportunities that we couldn't pursue on Phase 1A because it's in the right of way of Brody. Phase 1C, which is the underpass improvements, you know, would be nice, but I think that's a thing we permanently shelf. Phase 1B, which is the west side improvements as well as the intersection improvements. I, you know, my recommendation would be we wait until that, the west side of Brody is really ready to redevelop, which is going to be at least probably a decade or more. There's also in the budget for fiscal year '25, a mill and overlay of Brody Lane, which will be a really nice, you know, improvement to the street. It's, it's maintenance that needs to be done, it's, it's time for Brody to have that work done. So if we do that work next year, we wouldn't really want to touch the street for, you know, 10 years anyways. Oh, and yes, and then also in Public Works Committee, they had a really good suggestion to some of the elements that were, you know, safety projects or other important maintenance projects should not be coupled with Reimagine Brody. For example, the hazmat trap cleaning and lid replacement has been proposed as an FY 20, a standalone FY '25 project out of the venue fund, I believe. Because, you know, that's an, that's an important maintenance project that shouldn't necessarily be coupled with and then it inflates the cost of Reimagine Brody. Similar to the merge lane that's from Highway 290 onto Brody Lane there at the, at, by Wendy's. We think that's an important safety improvement, public safety, and the police department supports that improvement. So that, you know, we're looking at that as possibly being a, you know, not FY '25, but, you know, maybe 26, 27, street fund CIP project, just doing that merge lane. And of course, we'll have to work with Techstat on that, on that project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We could also reviews, review Phase 1A, but I'd be happy for questions or feedback from council on this.
Yeah, just a couple of points that I wanted to make. One is, I, I think there's also been a concern brought up about the scale of work the city is doing or taking on on an annual basis. And if obviously we're going to be moving forward, things like the backyard construction, we've already got Savannah Trail that's underway. There's other potential projects that we, they want to undertake. I would recommend us not moving forward in front of an intensive, you know, planning process this next year, but continuing to make progress, you know, refining what the feedback is, reducing the cost, coming up with a, this is the plan we're going to go forward with, and then looking at fiscal year '26 for the actual, you know, work on that project. So that gives us some time to space these things out or even beyond, right, depending on how, how much progress we're making. So what I don't want to do, though, is say, let's shell this for a full year and then a year later, it's like, what were we doing, you know, again? So I, I want to make sure that we are, we're taking the feedback we got from the committees, you know, to say, let's reduce costs, let's really focus in on these kind of design choices and let's continue to work to refine that so that, you know, we understand what the cost is going to be for this first phase. We have an integrated approach for the other phases if we want to move forward with those, so there's not just a, an isolated island of changes. So I kind of want to make that clear, just in terms of I, this should, from my perspective, I think, nothing that we want to take on in addition to the other projects, but we want to keep making progress based on the feedback we've gotten. The other thing I'll just highlight is that, you know, for me, the, the Phase 1A really is the core of what we want to do just because it is that component that connects the Violet Crown Trail. It's going to be an access point for hopefully people coming in to utilize the trail and we want to make it, you know, a, a key part of the, you know, what the city can showcase. I, I think that that's why we focused on it, but, you know, you know, certainly I think, from my perspective, that's, that's the most important thing that we can move forward with in terms of this project. I do like the idea of decoupling some of the safety improvements, right, because I think that that intersection, for example, is one that, you know, I could certainly use improvement at the 290 and, and Brody Lane. So those kind of elements I'm also think should be considered separately rather than looking at this as a whole project since there's important factors there as well. But yes, thank, thank you first half and the committees that looked at this. Can you also just go to the final, the Phase 1 cost was 4.5 million, I think? Is that what ended up being, I think there's a schedule of cost, and so if we start looking at, what do we mean to have a quarter reduction? Yeah, so it would be, you know, getting it down to 3.4 million or something like that in terms of, you know, our target objectives, which I think city minister mentioned that lighting is a big component of that, that we could look at reducing. And there's other things as far as landscaping or considerations in, in terms of how we, we, we plan out the routes, so. Hand it over to council now for feedback, so Mayor Burton, we'll start with you.
One, I want to, I want to second the things that the mayor said, particularly about not wanting to lose momentum on this project. And I, I wanted to really thank staff for making the effort to go to all the committees and talk to all the committees and to the committees themselves for their feedback, which I think is valuable and important, particularly the, the things that came out of P and E, which I think are excellent suggestions and the things that came out of Public Works. But I agree with you, I don't think we want to lose the, the momentum on this project.
Councilor Johnson?
I, I asked this before, this started as a better lighting project, right, kind of?
I think lighting was a component that kind of kicked it off, but I think there was a lot of talk on, for example, Public, Planning Environmental had for years has talked about getting, you know, more pedestrian and bike safety on that. There's been a lot of talks with CED and the Arts Commission on, you know, kind of place making and monument signs and things of that nature. So I think there were different components of this that were always being talked about in different ways by different committees and I think this really, Reimagine Brody project was trying to consolidate it all into one main vision for the, for the area.
Yeah, maybe better lighting was just like the, like the final push it needed to, you know, or the last thing we talked about.
It was the trigger.
It was, yeah, yeah. So if we don't go with these custom lights, are we still going to be able to achieve our better lighting, dark sky, et cetera, et cetera?
There's probably discussions we still will have to have with Austin Energy on the lighting, based on, you know, trail placement and things like that, because there's a certain distance, lights have to be away from the electrical lines. So we can't put them directly under electrical lines at their certain heights and stuff like that, so there are discussions. So that's kind of, I think, what the mayor was alluding to. We, we still make progress and have those discussions with Austin Energy on some of the placements of those lights, if it's even a viable option. I mean, because the, the green lights are, they're, they're dark sky compliant, so I think they will, they, they may not be, you know, the ideal lighting that, you know, some people may like, but I think they will fit some of the needs depending on where they are. And as Matt had mentioned, I mean, Ballard lightings are things that will have to be outside of that kind of Austin Energy scope. So it, it may be, I, I think that lighting section just is going to need some refinement and discussion on what, what is feasible and what can be done. So I think, as the mayor said, moving forward with some progress in those areas to kind of, you know, really go from a pretty good vision and concept to a more refined design and what can be done a little bit more in detail.
I'd hate to lose like that angle of it, I mean, it's like our promenade and then we just like, we got the lights that are available at the restore.
I, I forgot to mention this earlier, but several of the committees, including Public Works, mentioned, you know, have we, had we done, I mean, we did do community feedback, right, and we did post, I, I think most, a lot of the feedback was from Sunset Valley residents, although we did, like the night walk, we had, I believe, a participant that either saw it online or saw it at the shopping center. So, you know, we did have some feedback, but we never did, we did not do pedestrian counts per se or bicycle, we didn't do count. So we did have some feedback and so if, you know, councils, we'll have to do some more research on, you know, bring that forward on how we, and talk to our consultants on how we, we would do that, maybe we could. There was a joke, someone said, oh, put the, put the teens out there under umbrella and get them to count. So, you know, but if that's something we want to consider for FY '25, you know, I'm of the opinion, you know, the reason we are making improvements is to attract more pedestrians and bicyclists. But I think some of the feedback is, why are we spending this money if people aren't, you know, aren't using it? So it's kind of the chicken and egg scenario, you know, but if, if, if that would garner more support, right? Or would, I don't know, I don't, so that's something, that was feedback from the committees that we may want to consider. Do we want to, you know, take time next year to actually pursue any kind of pedestrian or bicyclists? or bicyclist, like, counts? So.
And my, my last thing was, like, well, who's doing the cutting here? If we're tasked with cutting 25%, is that us right now? Us over time? Staff going out and saying, well, these are the things I don't want?
Well, I think it's, it's probably going to be direction of staff as a result of our discussion tonight, say, come back with recommendations for, you know, cutting at least 25% of the project cost, right, as part of the, the next phase of this investigation, which would be not necessarily something they bring back, you know, for the budget, but it'd be next year, let's look at the, taking this design down to a cost that's, you know, reduced, right? And so that would be part of the, the next phase of this, too. So I think it really comes from council saying, give staff direction, do that, staff's going to come back with recommendations.
And are we including in the 25, is it like, is it only 25% painful cuts or things we didn't want anyway? Like, the raised intersection, which our civil engineer said is not that expensive, I don't see how it can't be, but-
So, yeah, I, I think it's probably, what I think we're looking at next year would be more along the line of, I think, Carrie can maybe speak to this, do, like, we need it, we need some more survey, we need something, you know, so we need to define where those easements are going to be that we're going to have to acquire for certain things. So it's more of that nature, and then kind of refining everything a little bit so that we can maybe then determine what those cuts are that need to be made. I'll let Carrie speak to that.
Yeah, I, I think that's the right direction, is getting a survey, doing, not of really complete design, but we can start to hone in a little bit more on costs once we have that survey, once we have exact locations of utilities and we can plan more specifically rather than saying, well, we have to have maybe a little bit of a, you know, when you look at it, there's a contingency because we don't have all the information yet, for example, from the survey. So we are saying that we're adding a little bit of a buffer there in case costs are increased because utilities are in a location where we have to do something special or something like that. So getting the survey and getting a sense of where exactly we are putting things is one way to help us reduce that contingency, which will then reduce the cost itself because we're getting a better idea of what it actually looks like. And then we can also start really honing in on the, the exact products that we're selecting, things like benches, things like lighting, the, the lighting that we, the recommendations that we worked with from AARP and that we got great feedback from the community on, you know, ultimately, they are expensive, and so we want to, if we do want Ballard's, we can certainly find ones that are less expensive, or we take them out completely. And I, for example, landscape areas, maybe we reduce those by 50%. So I think we can really keep the heart of what we're doing here and just see where we can kind of slowly reduce everything a little bit, whether it's different products, less of things. And I don't feel like we have to take out anything major at this point to get to that reduction, but Carolyn and I will work together and, you know, we'll, we'll get back to you all with what it will look like after we're able to get a little bit more into the details about the design.
Councilor Burrell?
Thank you. I think the, there's, well, there's obvious, I guess we're talking about directions for staff. My direction would be to, it's, well, it's clear that the, that the budget that's been proposed and at the level it's been proposed is, people are very uncomfortable with. 25% cut, the question that I have is, if we do a 25 or a 35 or a 45% cut, is that also going to be equally undesirable? And the only way to know is really take a look at it. So I guess what I would like to see would be for staff, perhaps with MEND, however that, however it can best be done, at the level that we're talking, which is a kind of, you know, it's a fairly preliminary stage, to, just to see, let's, let's look at 20, let's see what a 25% cut looks like, what's, what's going to happen. And I would say even a 35 or even a 45% cut, let's see where those are. Let's look at the pain point and make some kind of, some kind of decision on where, where the, where, where the, the cost benefit really, really lies in terms of acting in the best interest of the city. That would be what I would like to see.
Thank you. Councilor Medicas?
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, we're just at the point now, we got the feedback from the committees, and we're looking at, okay, this is one piece, and it connects the Violet Crown Trail through our city. So I think, I think that's a really good thing. And one of the things that came up in P and E was that the, some of the cost was in the number of trees that were included, so how can we have the, the best option with maybe less trees?
Yeah.
And maybe not putting a hard barrier between the pedestrian and the bikes and, but leaving enough room in the right of way that if eventually we see that there's enough traffic on the, on those pathways, that we can, if we want, if we need to. But I still wonder, like, okay, how many people are really walking from the Violet Crown Trail to the Home Depot Trail? Do we even have an idea of that traffic? Like, what are the numbers? And I know a lot of people talk about this as bringing more business to the shopping center, but I don't see people, like, stopping and buying clothes or buying anything from Home Goods when they're walking on a trail or riding a bicycle. So really, the benefit, I think, is to the restaurants, which is great. I mean, you know, stop and have lunch, or, so are there any, I'm wondering if there's any data points about those kinds of improvements that have happened in cities that show the benefit to the retail restaurant district?
Yeah, there, there is research out there for sure. I don't, I can't say anything off the top of my head, but I, I can look into that. I mean, there's a whole movement that's called, you know, you've heard of transit-oriented development, where people are building commercial developments and shopping and, and housing along transit stops. And there's another kind of movement called trail-oriented development, where people are looking at where a trail is going to be and how can we build housing and retail and, as you said, mostly food and beverage to, to support people who need, want to eat lunch, want to have a beer after their bike ride, things like that. And we can look into that and kind of get back to you on what that, what those reports are saying.
Thank you.
Mayor Bertin?
I think one important thing to remember about this is the potential indirect benefit of this project on the, on the shopping centers, in that, you know, the, the merchants and the, the property managers see that we, as a city, are making a continuing investment in this area to make it more attractive, not just to make it more attractive for us as a city, but for them as retailers. I kind, I, I, I don't kind of agree. I definitely agree with, with what Councilmember Medicas said, which is, I think we need more information about what the impact of usage by pedestrians and bikesses on this before we, before we decide what kind of investments we really want to make in that. And I, I think the idea of just having, starting out with counts is a very good idea, something that we should do. I think it's an important piece of, piece of information to help us determine that.
And Public Works Committee did ask for, not, not that it would preclude any kind of construction, but they did want those counts kind of prior to any construction happening.
Right.
Basically as that baseline so that we can then say, hopefully after something is built, we can say, oh, wait, we do have an increase in traffic, or, wait, it had no impact on traffic, foot traffic, basically.
And, and we can reach out to the Hill Country Conservancy. I want to say in our meeting with them, when we talked, when we pitched Reimagine Brody, they may, they might have mentioned they at le, had a counter for the new section?
Some location.
Okay.
I was interested where.
So hopefully they had, they did do, you know, if they have that data, I hope they will share it with us, at least for the, the new section that they built.
Yeah, have a baseline would be good.
Councilor Johnson?
I slightly want to dispel that, like, the $3.5 million, just, I, I know that's not what anyone is saying, but it's for pedestrians and cyclists down Brody. There's a lot of stuff in there. So let's just keep in mind that, I mean, it is, I run down Brody, and it's just miserable. I, I do it usually in the morning now, but, you know, it's, the sidewalk is right on Brody, and it's, so if we're going to say, like, what we're spending on kind of pedestrians, it's like, and cyclists, it would be what it is costing to move, to widen the sidewalk and move it in however many feet, and I think that's the cost that we're spending on, on that group that we're going to, like, get research on. But there's a lot of other stuff that has cost a lot of money. But that, that's not the first thing I was, how did everyone say 25%? I know it's a small city, but like, every-
It started with Public Works, and then they just knew that, we, we mentioned the Public Works recommendation.
Everybody falls.
And then everybody was like, sounds good.
Sounds good.
Public Works to say 30,000.
30%?
And, and in public safety, we said increase it by 50%, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it's like, that was the number that got thrown out, and everybody said, oh, yeah, that sounds good. So until we really look at what's feasible, you know, if we go with the green signs that we already, the lights that we already have on Brody, and where can they go? Is it feasible? Do we need to look at some alternative that, because of the electrical lines? Until we get down to that nitty-gritty, we don't know whether it's 25% or 50%, right? So I think the important thing is that we keep moving this forward and keep really looking at the specifics, like, what will it really take? And, and I'm all for, you know, making it better for pedestrians, but that whole concept I keep hearing that this will increase the business, the sales tax revenue is what I question. But, you know, I don't know that that's really something we can put data to. So I just, just, I'm all for pedestrians, but-
Yeah. And I also think, to echo Councilmember Burrell's point, is until we go through the next sort of iteration, we won't really know the, the cost benefits or the trade-offs, right, you know, because it, maybe it's not 25% because that's that somewhat arbitrary target, but it's something that is, what is the best benefit for the costs, you know, that we're going to see, that we're going to have, and that could be more, it could be less, and it's really going to be council's decision at that point. I, I think in general, though, that the committee feedback is 4.5 million, 4.5 million is a lot, right, to invest in something that may not have the sales tax return corresponding. There may be other indirect benefits that are hard to measure, you know, especially as we want businesses to reinvest in those properties along Brody Lane, because we know that that's going to be something that's somewhat out of our control unless we can, you know, influence that, and this is possibly one way we can influence that. And so I, I think those are all factors that, you know, are much harder to measure, but the council needs to weigh as we consider what the cost of this is going to be. It is going to be very useful, though, to have data saying this type of trail system or this type of trail to, you know, commercial area, what backs it up, but also, I think, counts, right, in terms of, like, utilization. Just let me know the dates or do they count, because I'll go out there and, on my bike, try to influence that a smidge, yeah. But, yeah, all that'll be useful information, so. Councilor Medicas, and then we do have public comments, too.
So I, I do, I do agree with Councilmember Young. I, I think it's important for place-making, is what we talked about before, is, is creating this place, this sense of place, when you turn off of 290 down Brody Lane, that you, that you feel and you see that you're in someplace different. And, and to me, that's really part of that, lifting up the vision of our city, our place-making, that this is someplace that it's good to be, and, and you are now there. So that's what's important, I think.
Thank you. We'll open it up for members of the public that wish to speak at this time.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26 weeks. And I, and I really came up to speak to what Councilmember Medicas was talking about, that this, that this was what this project was about. And the things people currently say about Brody Lane, once the sun goes down, is, oh, you mean that dark place in the road? Literally, I, I believe I've had a comment with someone who used to work at the City of Austin, and they said exactly that thing, that's what their friends are saying about this place. And so the difference, when we, when we do this and we have it lit with our lights from 290 all the way down to Lowe's, essentially, that says, this is a place. You know, we put trash cans, we put benches, people have been, have been giving me grief for a long time, but really, you put trash cans and branded benches, branded street signs, significant lighting, and you have a place. And, and when you move the sidewalks to where there's someplace that people want to walk, you know, not up there as Councilmember Johnson was talking about, you have made a place, and that's what we're trying to do. And, and so when people, I think it's good to have the baseline cuts that some of my colleagues on Public Works wants to do, because it's always good to be able to say, here we are, here we went. But you can't talk about people wanting to walk there until you put some shade. And we don't want to have so many trees, that we had the problem that we have on ERW, that all your banners are occluded. So I, I, you know, it's like, well, we may put banners there, we can't see them. So I'm not, I'm a fan of some shade, but not, we want to make it work to where you see everything. And, and I think that that's what I've been making noise about for a good decade now, and, and that's what we're talking about. And I, and I think, so I don't want to get lost in sales tax numbers, is, I really think that we say, we're going to build a beautiful place, and that's what we do, we're going to build a lit place, and, and we're going to be able, be a place, build a, a, a public circle square kind of place to walk that people would actually want to walk in the evenings, you know? That's, to me, what we're trying to create. And, and a lot of the things that we're taking these little pieces, I think it misses that point of view. So I want us to refocus on, we're lighting our downtown, that's, because for us, it is our downtown, and, and we're lighting it as Sunset Valley. It's not Austin, it's Sunset Valley, and you can tell by the streetlights. Oh, and you can tell by the benches that have our little logo on them. Oh, you can tell by the trash cans that have our little logo on them, you know? And, and you, and you want to walk on those sidewalks that we've just created because you're, you're no longer in danger of dying or, or being, and your dog running into the traffic, you know? These are the things that we're creating, and, and you can't put a number on it, but you've now created a place that, that is welcoming and inviting for, for all those merchants that are going to come. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your efforts to do this.
Thank you. And against council, just a reminder, we're not taking action tonight, but we're taking feedback, and if we decide to, you know, bring this back, it would be as a proposed budget for the next sort of, like, incremental step for the next year's budget. That would be where council would reconsider, you know, what the scope of this might be, but that's what I propose, is that we set aside some funding for staff to continue to work on the lighting, on the utility surveys, those things, so that we can potentially target this as a future project for us in, in later years.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other feedback or questions for MENDs?
Good work, thank you.
All right. Council, we are at our end of our agenda items. If there's a motion to adjourn, Councilmember Medicas?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned at 8:06 PM.